My dad's a farmer and my mom has an antique shop. Yeah, I live in Hair Lake. I live at the corner of Hair Lake and Beavers.
Have a seat. We're gonna get started in about two minutes, six o'clock.
I got this. Yeah. Well, this one got called pretty quick, so.
Do what?
No.
We got plenty of seats.
Yep. We know how to spread seats around.
This is not gonna be much fun, no way. Have to get your own seat.
Is that possible?
No.
Uh-huh.
Hmm. He's gonna say it's the panel. This is our meeting?
Okay.
Yeah.
I got it. Thank you for that.
No problem.
Yes, you have to wait till six o'clock.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll get official. I'll give you a few seconds after, just to be safe. All right, good evening, everyone. It's six o'clock. My clock on my phone, so we're gonna go ahead and get started. My name's Eddie Willingham. I'm chairman of the Chautauqua County Planning Commission. And we call this special meeting tonight really just to take care of some administrative issues, but we're gonna do that tonight. And hopefully, this will be something that'll be a positive for everybody in the room. And y'all look forward to some things upcoming. This new roll call. I would like to introduce a new member to the board. As y'all know, Aaron Reed was one of the original members, and he had to step down based on some conflicts. Him being in the construction industry, he felt like he would be working on projects that might be involved in this. And he just felt like it'd be better if he stepped aside from this. All right, so he has been replaced by Lee Hamby. This is Lee right here. The bio I've got on Lee is he's a lifelong resident of Chautauqua County. He and his wife Susan live in the Chelsea community on his grandparents' family farm. They have one son, Callan. He is a member of Menlo Methodist Church. Is that Callan's a member or you?
Oh, we are. Where we show up.
Okay. They're members of Menlo Methodist Church, and Lee is also a graduate of Chautauqua High School. He is owner broker of Southern Group Realty in Georgia. He is also a licensed real estate agent in Georgia and Alabama, and is the 2022 Broker Representative for Greater Onboard Realtors. So, welcome aboard, Lee. We appreciate you coming on board with us. That was one purpose for the meeting, is to introduce our new board member. Secondly, I was in contact and had some discussions with Blake and then some discussions with our county attorney about all of the questions and concerns that have arisen since Blake adopted this ordinance. And I asked the county attorney, who's much better at English language than I am, to write us up a resolution that I passed out to our board for them to review. And then we'll discuss that here as a board tonight, and then move forward in whatever direction the board sees fit. This time, I will read that resolution out loud. "County of Chautauqua, State of Georgia, Resolution of the Chautauqua County Planning Commission. Whereas the Chautauqua County Planning Commission was created by enactment of the Chautauqua County Land Development Ordinance, and whereas the undersigned members of the Planning Commission have been duly appointed by the Commissioner of Chautauqua County, Georgia, and whereas the undersigned Planning Commission members met in a special call meeting pursuant to proper notice, and the undersigned constituting a quorum of said commission, and whereas the undersigned have concluded that the development and implementation of a land development ordinance is needed, and whereas concerns have been raised concerning the existing ordinance, and whereas the Planning Commission is desirous of proposing amendments of the ordinance to the Commissioner of Chautauqua County, Georgia, and whereas the Commission desires adequate time and consideration before recommending any amendments, and whereas the Commission further desires to receive public input concerning proposed amendments. Now therefore be resolved by the undersigned Commission members that it hereby recommends that the Commissioner of Chautauqua County, Georgia, suspend Article II of the ordinance and thus prohibit enforcement of the same until 11/59 on December 31, 2022. During such time as enforcement of ordinance is suspended, the Commission will work to revise and edit the land development ordinance and shall seek public input on said revisions and will present a proposal to the Commission for his consideration. It is further resolved that the Chairman of this Commission shall deliver a copy of this resolution to the Commissioner. So resolve this such such date of September, 2022." So that's kind of where we're at. First of all, from the board, any questions or comments concerning anything in this resolution?
I'll say, I think it's a good idea to give people time to do that.
Section 2 of the article pertains to the violations.
That's the penalties.
The penalties, yeah, the enforcement of it, yeah.
Right. Yeah, that might, since it doesn't say penalties for the group here, the article that's being set aside is the penalties article in the ordinance that's out there with the intention that for the next three months, we get input from the county. We've already, we collected a lot of good ideas at the last planning meeting that we had here. And we've got those drafted, but then as we watched the reaction of the county, you know, folks' concerns, a lot of questions. We had a lot of questions, too. So what we want to do is make a conscientious effort at trying to get this thing boiled down into something that works. Because what we're here to do, we're all volunteers. What we're here to do is make sure the communities, wherever development occurs, that the communities there get to talk about it, get to say, "Yeah, I'm concerned about this," or "I'm concerned about that." But we've all been able to practice for the last few weeks, getting a lot of questions. And, sorry, I'm kind of stepping in.
Oh, you go right ahead, girl.
But a lot of the questions we've heard have been the same kind of questions we've had. But the underlying reason for this ordinance is we want our communities to be able to have a say in what kind of development occurs in the unincorporated part of this county. And that wasn't happening. We were having a lot of things happen in this county over the past three years. They got real close to my home. And a lot, some folks may not know about that, but we don't need that type of loose cannon development stuff around here.
Well, how loose cannon was it?
It was in the front page of the paper.
It was listed in the newspaper, your own word.
The Lakes of Somerville development?
Yeah.
Which wasn't legitimate.
Was that part of what we're doing here?
For the pa-
Are we discriminating against black people?
No.
You're not discriminating?
Not at all. Not at all. I got a lot of friends that are black, and that's-
I do, too.
Look, there were people that had been pulled into what appears to be a development scam.
But it wasn't a scam, correct?
I don't know that for a fact. I'm not close enough to it.
But you knew the fact that you could be able to tell other people what they should do with their land because of what was going on at your house?
No, no.
Well, that's what you were saying.
Andy, I think we didn't have any way, we didn't have-
I always been up there to use their land and how they string them together. So all of a sudden, y'all have the power to tell us what to do. So that's-
What we're working on is a way to allow the communities to be able to filter whatever kind of development's coming. And this is really focused on subdivision development and commercial development. Okay, and we got out of the last meeting, there were a lot of exceptions. And y'all stop me or correct me if I say anything that doesn't make any sense. I feel like when this ordinance came about, it was largely because for three years, the Taloga community and actually part of the Lyerly community was just struggling against what was taking place that didn't make a whole lot of sense. And so an ordinance needed to come about. Now, Blake found this mechanism to put into the, into the community. And I was thankfully found a way. Because for years, we've been worried about, how do we control? And it's not so much, look, I'm a farmer. I got a farm that I've had for 30 years, 33 years. Okay? This is where we've raised our family and our grandkids. I just don't want craziness going on in this county.
That's what I'm trying to- You should have these meetings all the time for people where they can get in here. I found out about this in the border mouse today and in the show in the paper. If you could get it to press on Tuesday, you could have had it to the public on Tuesday. It's good to wait until Thursday.
Yeah. Can I just, you said give people adequate time to come to the meeting. Simply, the purpose of this meeting is to schedule meetings that everybody can come to. We're not here to discuss the ordinance, changes to the ordinance. Nobody's prepared for that tonight. But we're gonna schedule three meetings tonight that'll be two, four, six, eight weeks out. So everybody will know and have plenty of time to come to. Does that satisfy what you just, the question you just wrote?
No change, fine.
Great. That's, that's just what I read in here, in this, in this resolution, that that's what we want to do.
You hand those out to the people when it came in, so they could read along with you what you were reading.
I honestly didn't know how many people was gonna be here.
It doesn't matter. You can still have a copy. We're prepared.
How many people in here has got a smartphone? Raise your hand. What I do when I want to copy something, I'll come up here and take a picture after, and I've got it in my phone from now on. Be glad to let you do that after the meeting, but, you know, there's no, you know, I can't be prepared to give one, 15, or 100 people, so.
You should think.
Huh?
If you're a chair, if you mind, you should think.
Sir, there's not a copy machine here. I'd be glad to make copies, but.
I would imagine there's one in all people where the commissioner's office. And that all of that is already tax payable, that's to mean our taxes paid for. You ought to be able to take care of every piece of paper we need.
We're chasing a rabbit that's not helping nobody about having a copy of this. Anybody who wants a copy of it, have it, they can go to the commissioner's office and get it, folks.
And be real honest about it, I don't listen to the radio or anything. I didn't even know you was talking about the ordinance, what ordinance.
Right.
You know? I don't, I don't even know what ordinance you're talking about.
I just read it right here.
I understand.
The Chautauqua County Land Development Ordinance. Huh? The notice in the paper said the Chautauqua County Planning Commission, that's the only ordinance we deal with.
How many people get on before 3:00 or 5:00 in the afternoon, pick up the paper, and you get to meet at 6:00?
Sir, I'm leaving here and I'm going to Lowe's to pick up material for my job tomorrow. I'm taking my time, too.
What you were doing, I said to the general public, well, I think work, I don't work. But I found out about it late this morning. When I did work, I heard it on the radio a lot of times at 6:00.
Right.
And I'm out here coming in from 200 or 300 miles away, be lucky to get through that course in time to be here or park the truck.
Well, and you may, you may have missed the, this, we're not really here to do anything other than to let the community know there's gonna be three more meetings this year, once a month, right? Because we-
In the not-too-distant future, yeah.
We want to have working sessions so that, so that the community can, sure, the ordinance is, it's confusing. It was to us, too. And we're trying to get it cleaned up. We, the timing has probably been sloppy. I think we'll admit that. I personally felt like we had to have something, because I've been fighting a battle. You can talk to most of the people in Taloga that were close to what was going on that there was no way to actually have any say in.
Does the ordinance say something about what we can or cannot do with our property?
It's not sounding.
It's not.
It is not sounding.
Yes, it's sounding, it's sounding.
No, it's not.
The point is you can't, you can't go around that, it's sounding.
It is not sounding.
Time out, time out. I'm just gonna suspend the meeting before you start arguing. From this point on, raise your hand, and when I recognize you, you can speak. Okay? We're getting out of hand. We're getting out of hand. I'm gonna repeat myself again. The purpose of this meeting, and the only purpose of this meeting tonight, is to adopt the resolution to schedule three meetings that the public can attend and have full input into changes that I see in this ordinance. We're not here tonight to make any proposed changes in this ordinance. I'm not gonna hear any from the floor. And what I highly recommend is that when you come to one of these other meetings, is that you bring those in writing, so I can take them home with me. Mr. Mosey, you was here, raise your hand up first.
I just want, I'm just asking this for clarification. Now, when you read that, it was my understanding that the next meetings can only deal with Article II?
No, we're asking to suspend Article II. We're gonna take, we're gonna discuss the entire ordinance, any, any issue in the ordinance anybody has exception to. And any recommended changes to that, amendments to it, additions, extractions, clarifications, corrections. That includes definitions, that includes adding a table of contents, whatever we need to do to make it a better ordinance for the general public as a whole of Chautauqua County. You had your hand up.
Yeah, do you have any information tonight about the process where the public can make suggestions and possible changes to this document? Is it gonna be by email? I mean, is there any idea of how you input suggestions for the modification as stated in the resolution?
Like I just mentioned in my previous statement, I would prefer them in writing. Because, you know, we're not gonna have a court reporter here to take notes on everything that's said. We said at our last meeting, any suggestions, any comments, questions you've got, address them to BJ. He's the, he's the stout member, he's the paid man, he's got plenty of time during the day, because he has nothing else to do.
See, I, I've just moved here, so I don't know where to find information and stuff about this, so.
Chautauqua County's website. You'll have his contact information.
Chautauquacounty.org?
Yeah. Back corner back there, you had your hand up for a while.
So this is, is that in stone yet?
What's that?
The ordinance?
The ordinance has been set in stone since when it was adopted in March, yeah. What we're doing, what I read, is we're asking the Commissioner to suspend enforcement of it until January the 1st, or midnight on December 31st. The ordinance is still in effect, because that's what creates the Planning Commission that gives us the authority to have these meetings and make suggestions and changes and recommendations to the Commissioner. Yes, sir. I've got you next.
When can we get a copy of this ordinance?
It's available online at chautauqua county.org in its entirety.
So we just print it off?
Yes, sir. Pull it up on the internet.
So my next question is, why?
Why what?
Why were we not told anything about the ordinance until it just pops up?
I, I think there were several articles in the paper, on the radio, I think there was notice, notices given that the Commissioner was gonna adopt the ordinance. He held public meetings. People just didn't see them, because honestly, at the end, it must not have been an issue to people. Now that it's been adopted, it's became an issue. People are talking about it, so more people are aware of it. So now, we're going, that's why, at this point, people are aware of it. We're gonna have these meetings where there's plenty of public here. I'm expecting 100, 150 people to this meeting. It may be more, I don't know. Maybe we can get them all in this room. They're gonna be limited to the number we can allow in here, because we only got the one exit due to fire marshal rules. No, we got another one, I'm sorry. Didn't look over my shoulder. But, yes, sir. I'm just wondering, did I answer your question?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
So what you said, well, about writing, what you want to bring up at the meeting?
Yes, sir.
As such?
I would prefer that, yeah.
And it turned it in to somebody. And if the board doesn't like it, then Ralph or whoever wrote it, he ain't gonna get to get up and talk, because you don't wanna ask that question.
No, we-
That's the way that, that's the way it came out to make what you said. You want it where you can decide if you want to hear it or not, if you want to bring it up to the public. That's not the way it works.
Okay, let me clarify that. We're gonna have a public meeting, open discussion. Anybody that's here, that gets the floor can say anything they want to, as long as it's legal. Okay? But I, no, I'm not trying to limit anything. We're here to try to give the public ample opportunity to have input on this thing. I'm not trying to ramrod nothing down.
It should have been done before we signed it in, before we signed it.
That's one thing we can't do, is go back in time. Moving forward, we can change things.
You can change, fine.
That's, that's what we're here for, sir. That's what we're here for.
Well, if Ralph turns in some, do you let Ralph speak?
Sure. Anybody that wants to speak's gonna have the opportunity to speak, as long as we got time.
This is a mission process, mainly just to get it on paper, so that when we do add it into the situation, we know exactly what that person asked us to do. Other than it just going word of mouth, because otherwise Ralph's gonna get up, say a bunch of stuff, we're gonna have discussions about it. And some of that stuff may or may not fall to the wayside during that discussion, because one thing could be more important than the other. Putting it in a paper means, makes it, has a process of us seeing exactly what Ralph wants and making sure that we all can discuss it with the public, making sure that that resolution can be developed and we can put it into the thing.
Okay, I'm just trying to, did Ralph don't have to be shoved off over here in the car?
No, Ralph is not going to be shoved off, because Ralph can get with me anytime between 8:30 and 5:00 Monday through Friday. I can give you my card after this meeting, if anybody would like it. You can hit me up, let me know what you'd like. I can give you my email address. You can write me whatever you'd like. Or you can bring it to the meetings, because we're gonna have an open forum for people to speak. So we just, we just ask that you have it organized, so we don't discuss a bunch of other things that we don't need to discuss in order so you can get what you want out of, like, the communication process. So when you stand up, if we've already submitted it to me, we know Ralph stood it up because he wants X, Y, and Z. Cool. And then he gets up and speaks, and we can, we can comprehend what Ralph wants, truly. Just like you're having a hard time comprehending this situation, if it was in writing, we would all be on the same page.
Any other questions from the audience? Ralph ain't in the bathroom, I'm sorry I had to say that.
There's a question in the back.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I just have a small question. We wanna open a furniture business there in our yard. Nobody could see it would be in a building that we built. I mean, would that qualify as commercial, and then we have to do a dumpster in the driveway?
If it is-
Now, process that even being able to open?
If it's a commercial, if it's a commercial business and you're opening it within the incorporated areas, the-
Level management.
Or a thing, you would, you would pay, I mean, you would bring the plans, and if you needed a variance, or you had to have a variance, or there was some reason, in that case, you would submit it, just like Ralph would, in writing, to me. And then we would see that, we would see that and see either grant a variance or not, depending on the circumstances of the situation. Right now, as he said, we're trying to fill it out more. So in that case, any suggestion you may have, if we get more of those suggestions from other people who are also in your position to open up a business, then that may become a resolution on its own, just out of pure continued-
That would just be so expensive for us, but then it would make an expense. We just wanna sell fixed-up furniture to- We just wanna sell fixed up furniture at Target, that's it.
And I think that's a very good example of some, some things that needs to be cleaned up in here to clarify what's gonna be considered a commercial enterprise. Right now, it's kinda open. Yes. Yeah.
Uh, and, and, um, make your art business.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Who's over here? Yes, sir.
Sounds like the made, y'all gonna be a little dictator at Chautauqua County. This board is and this district.
I'm sorry you feel that way, sir.
That's what it sounds to me. Everybody gotta go through y'all about the stuff like that. We don't need this in this county. It needs to be stopped right now. This is a good time to stop it. That's all I got to say.
Yes, sir.
What about the existing businesses?
Any.
When we got a business at our farm where we sell pecans and we sell meat out of the building, what is that gonna entail for us that's already got existing businesses?
Any enterprise or development or anything that was in existence prior to the adoption of this in March is considered what everybody calls grandfathered in, an existing non-conforming use is the actual terminology for that. An existing non-conforming use is, is the official, but it's called grandfathered in is kind of the general term everybody's used to.
I can explain the grandfathered in.
Right. Which, to clarify that, that means you can continue to operate in the manner that you are now, but you can't expand or change that business in any significant manner. I mean, you know, you might change product you sell inside the building, but as long as you don't double the size of your building or things like that. Speaking in general terms, then, yeah, you can continue to operate as you're operating. That's my understanding. Yes, sir.
Sounds like we're gonna be hoodwinked in the county, is what it sounds like.
Certainly, we hope, we don't, we hope not. That's not our intentions, our plan. Any other comments? I, I would like to move on to scheduling our meetings, what we came here for.
Can I make some input on the scheduling of the meetings?
Sure.
If we're gonna have three meetings and they're gonna be working sessions, this is a huge document. I think we should divide it up in logical sections to cover at each meeting.
Okay.
Not to say we can't address the topics from the audience and public, but that way we can kinda stay on task and maybe get through it because it's eighty seven pages.
Right, right. Okay.
Well, and on that topic, just FYI, we, we built a table of contents. Frankly, we had difficulty with the document because it's, it's big. And it, once you kinda organize it and can see what the sections are talking about, it tends to help. So, we've got that on the list to try to help boil it down and make it a little bit easier to follow, and maybe breaking it up does make some sense. But now, these next three months is when, if anybody's got any issue, big question that needs to be clarified, having it available, that's, we're doing, we've already got a pretty long laundry list of amendments from the first meeting, that meeting that we had last month sometime, and it was great input. You gave us some great ideas, Andy. You did.
Let me, I, I wanna ask you something.
Yes, sir.
I, I procrastinate a lot, but I'm thinking about using my bottom land to put in watermelon patch and some kennel. If I set a little deal that look like hundreds got out here on twenty seven, is, is that gonna affect any of this if I, I set this one side beaver road out there?
My understanding as the ordinance stands today, yes, but hopefully by the time watermelon's come in next season, that'll be changed. Does that answer your question?
I mean, I say that ain't changed. What would I have to do? Do I have to build a bigger culvert, a, a bigger driveway where I just have a stand for people pulling off the roof when they're going home or whatever, or going to buy a watermelon or a kennel? What, what's that tell me I got to do right now?
Any commercial development you did, you'd have to comply with ordinance. And, I mean, I can't specifically say what everything's required for a watermelon stand, but.
I, I don't know any of the information on the ordinance because I've not read or heard anything other than.
And, and as I, as I hear what you're describing, that's the exact same kinda stuff that I would be doing, and frankly, I think it would need to be either a variance or a carve out because that, this county is not to the level of development where that type of thing has to be prospect.
Regulated, yeah.
It, it, what we're really concerned about is multi-unit subdivisions and commercial where you're talking about needing parking area and lighting and safety for entrance and egress to the streets. It's that kinda thing. We were actually starting to have some traffic issues out on three thirty seven with the promotional stuff out of that, stuff that was coming out of Atlanta that wasn't legitimate. So, this, this planning commission is here to not step on what you're describing. It's just to make sure we don't have people coming into this county. We got a lot of absentee owners in this county, people that have not lived in this county for decades that might need to sell their property, and frankly, a lot of them aren't real selective about who they're selling it to. We just gotta watch out for our county.
It cannot work that way.
If you know what, that's the first place we tried to go. Couldn't, couldn't manage to make this seller in Atlanta see how reasonable our offer was.
Mr. Mosey.
This is a question of your, this, not knocking in about it, but most of the times when you, uh, write something or do something, uh, you have some basic, you look at somebody else's plan, you know, because you don't have to reinvent the wheel. And I'm just asking this, have the people, uh, whatever group we got this from, did we ever study to see what, how long they had this in place and what problems they had, uh, with this? Because it, it kinda seems like to me, and I'm, I'm not knocking the group up here, I'm just saying, studies should have been done and all the input before we sign this document is what I'm saying.
Basically, we got the cart before the horse?
Yeah.
We're gonna go back and get the horse. That's what our plan is moving forward, okay? Yes, sir.
I could about say that it sounds almost like a copy of what's happening in Jordan County. Jordan County's getting to the point where they're gonna tell you how many livestock you can have on a certain piece of property. Whether you, you can only have ten sheep or five goats or whatever, but it's gonna be smaller, smaller amounts of land. If the man's got ten acres, he ain't gonna be able to handle about five or six sheep if they weren't, and that's what it's about to come down. And one other thing, this highway right here is the busiest highway in the world. Lot of people, truckers especially, they don't wanna go through Chattanooga because it's a mess. It's worse, Chattanooga's worse to get through than Atlanta most of the time.
Right.
They'll head off at one forty, come over here twenty seven and hit this road and go up across the mountain and on across forty over in Alabama just to hit seventy two and go west, or hit fifty nine and go on north to twenty four. That's why all them trucks come up through here. That CV is telling everybody to come on. I, I've done it in the past. I'd be up around twenty four trying to get along. FedEx man, oh my, there's a, you know, that bridge there just the other side of fifty nine on twenty four, be backed up to whoever, you know?
Coach.
Just follow me. My man, he said just take me a half hour. I said, I'm stopping at Summerville, just going down that way. He didn't wanna get off route because FedEx figures they need to stay on route. But he said, I'll remember this. Just pay attention to these trucks and cars come through here. Something needs to be done with this road.
Well, I think that's been in the plans for, for years with the bypasses, and hopefully that'll help alleviate some of that. Let's get back to our, our point of business. I've had, I'd like to have, go have some supper. We got three meetings we're gonna schedule. Uh, we already got one scheduled, October thirteenth. It's been announced for weeks now, uh, is an upcoming meeting. Uh, I'll take some input from the audience. Some of you mentioned six o'clock's not a good time. Uh, do, do we wanna do it some other time besides Thursday at six o'clock? Do we wanna do a Tuesday at seven? I'm open. I'm a single man. I can come, I can come at two o'clock in the morning if you want to, but.
I think October fourth at seven PM right here would be a pretty good time actually.
October the fourth?
October the fourth.
I think somebody else has already called a meeting for that time.
I.
I think that's a good one to share.
Yeah.
He's fixing the tap in the chain there. It's gonna be dark. I would like to be out in the dark.
Right, right. Yeah, the days are getting shorter every day. Yes, ma'am, they sure are.
The October meeting that's planned, there is a conflict with Ainsley, I hope.
Yeah.
So, so everyone knows that.
We, you mentioned next week. You got fall break for trying next week and Chautauqua the week after that. Lot of counties gonna be in Panama City Beach because that's where they go on fall break. It, because Hurricane missed it. Uh, so, we may extend that first meeting another week to give pla, give people plenty of notice to be here because I've already been reminded tonight that short notice is not helpful to folks.
So, October what?
Right, right now, we've got a meeting scheduled October thirteenth, but, uh, one of our members brought up possibly changing that date.
Well, I can go in and tell you the week after that is not gonna do for a lot of us because we'll be just former Mexico on, and it's Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Yes, sir.
That's it, so.
Yeah. And that is different, ain't it?
Nineteenth to twenty, they back.
Twenty first. Multi together.
Multi.
Do the meetings happen Monday through Friday?
Not necessarily. I'm not gonna do it on Sunday because I'm going to church. Y'all do it without me.
We, we're gonna do it on Sunday, but.
Why was, why do you not like being invited to, uh, the other meeting on the fourth?
I didn't say I didn't like being invited to it, but the board just can't come there. We can't ha, if we can't have a forum there and conduct business unless we duly announce that meeting.
If you really wanna know what's going on with people being at that meeting and setting the hours, if you can't get that now, any two of you may be there. That's not a vote of the board.
That's right.
So, we need to set up a date. Let's, let's figure, we're here, let's set up a date.
There again.
Since we can't, since we can't do the nineteenth, twenty, twentieth, and twenty first, and we're still keeping it on the Thursday, how's the following week of October? Because we would like to have it in October, but if you guys wanna do it in the weekend, we can do that. And the reason we picked six is so that people could get off work and come here.
Well, it would be better for me because I drive trucks, so it's gonna be better for me to get in here at seven o'clock. I'm just gonna be straight with you.
Okay.
But I understand there's some of us, one of us both live, killed by COVID, and I respect that, but if I need to, I'll go get her and we'll, I'll drive it.
That's why, that's why I feel personally, you know, a variety of times is gonna work better. You know, you, you, every, we want everybody to have opportunity. Everybody don't have to be at every meeting, you know, everybody don't wanna be at every meeting. But if we have three meetings at different times, different days, hopefully that'll give as many people as possible can get a chance to come.
So, any suggestions other than seven o'clock for sure? I mean, like, seven o'clock, is it any day of the week, sir? Seven o'clock is okay, or?
I wouldn't do, I would do at least United seven o'clock, you will finish the vote.
Okay, well, yeah. Means, well, Wednesday and Sunday being out of the voting, any of the other days of the week seem okay with anybody else?
I'm good with any other day of the week.
Okay.
My, my recommendation is that we can just keep the October thirteenth date even though we're not gonna have two people here.
Okay.
We're not gonna really be conducted, adopting anything, voting on anything. We'll still have a forum here most likely. Uh, because it's already been advertised, that's just gonna get confusing.
That's true.
If we change that date. So, my recommendation is we keep October thirteenth at six o'clock as it's been advertised, and then look for two more dates and times that have some variety to it that'll help out.
So, November and December. Is anybody having any suggestions for November?
What about the last week of October, the twenty fourth through twenty eighth?
That, yeah.
We got that.
I'm out of town that week.
Uh, the last week of October, you said the twenty fourth through the twenty eighth?
Yeah, you're out of town that whole week.
I am.
Any other conflicts that anybody knows of that week? I know, uh, yeah.
Twenty eighth will be a football game. You're gonna lose out on that. You need to go do anything on Friday nights.
Oh, right, yeah. I wouldn't do Friday nights in the fall. That's, no, they don't wanna do Saturdays either because Georgia plays.
That's it.
And some, some team from Tuscaloosa that I, I don't mention their name by.
Twenty seven, which means nine days to you.
All right.
So, we're gonna do two in the month of October.
I think that's subject to the civic center being available.
Right.
Yeah, that, that's one of the, that's one of the conflicts with this is because I'm gonna have to, whenever we get done with this, I like, if we get a couple of dates.
I say we get four days, have an alternate date.
There we go.
And then we'll publicize.
Publicize.
Why do we have to have it here? Could we not do it at the Ag Center?
It'd close, that way we get more people.
Well, the Ag Center would be.
Oh, it's Ag, I've never been, so I don't know.
Right, yeah. We, we could be outside the Ag Center.
Okay.
Too bitter of the cold.
Right.
A little warmer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, really? Okay.
I can remember a question on that last week about October. Y'all talking about it due to Tuesday. Uh, I'm gonna be out of town saying after that week. I love Auburn.
Right.
Would like to see it leave.
I'd like to have a different day too myself, so. Anybody opposed to Tuesday, the twenty fifth?
Let's go with it. I suggest you go from six o'clock to seven.
Seven o'clock on that.
Have some of the, you know, the trucks work.
Uh, October twenty fifth, twenty twenty two, seven PM. And I may actually see if I can get the Ag Center for that and just have a different location. They got a kitchen too. Somebody might wanna cook us something.
I wouldn't wear that.
Lauren Cherry cooked it up. She's been a dog from Bo-Kan.
So, it's seven PM.
You know, we're, we're live. She's gonna hear that. Make sure she, she knows who said that, man.
There's too many.
All right. All right, then, November, we just need to make sure, uh, November eighth is election day. Is that correct?
November eighth.
Nope, so we wanna avoid that and then really anytime leading up to that, maybe later on, the, the week of the fourteenth through the eighteenth. Do y'all really feel like a Saturday morning meeting would, would get people here?
I, I really don't think so.
I think you're gonna get most of you people in here.
In the evenings.
In the evenings.
Yeah.
But in, in the interest of getting additional input, I think you probably do a little.
Offer it.
Yeah.
Maybe it's, they don't schedule a third one.
Yeah.
This year, and after our first eleventh meeting, ask if that, because of the large group.
Right.
That might be a good idea.
Say that again, I'm sorry, I missed part of it.
I, I, on your first meeting from October the eleventh.
Right.
Thirteenth, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Ask if that, if the group would like to do one on a Saturday. If they don't, we can go back and do that third meeting on a, on a regular scheduled date. Because you're gonna have some people that can't make these evening meetings.
Right.
So, they might want to come in here on Saturday.
Any, any of the board have any input on a Saturday morning meeting?
Um, the only, the only input I have is just having that time to be able to put notice out there for legally, so we have at least those, those weeks before. I mean, it's really more like, I think it's like four days. I believe it's detailed in there. At least we have notice before that. So, uh, if we could do something, as long as we do it, we're respecting that. We can put notice. If we can get these on hard, like, I ca, I can't get with Cindy right now.
Yeah.
And say, hey, is this there? Because she's gone. But, uh, like tomorrow, when I do bring these before her and then she gives me any kinda, you know, oh, we can't do it on the, the, the last day because she has another meeting at seven o'clock or something like that, then we may have to move it, but it, it'll probably be around that time, any of the ones we choose. So, if we do choose a Saturday meeting, if she says, well, I got a conflict, I may have to push it to Monday or something like that.
Or try the Ag Center.
Or try the Ag Center in that respect. So, I've never, I didn't even know it was available, so that's, that's great. That's great. Uh, but yes, I, I mean, that's the only thing I said, just so we can have that notice from the things so we can put it in the paper and all that stuff.
What about November the third, uh, the third meeting? Because, uh, going back to what was read, uh, we need to have everything worked out before the first of the year, so we don't rush ourselves because when you get into Thanksgiving and that Christmas season there, it's hard to get people together.
Yeah, yeah. I, I would say after we have our three public forum meetings where it's gonna be more of an open forum discussion, then we're gonna have to take some time and compile that and then come back and do a, a fourth meeting to come in and actually vote on the recommendations we're gonna pass forward to the commissioner. You raise your hand?
I, I wanna add mine. I s, I suggested November the third.
Yeah. Uh, that's, uh, November third is on a Thursday?
Thursday.
Yeah.
How long away is it from that other?
It's two weeks. No, it's, it's a week later, yeah.
It's a week later?
Yeah.
I mean, as long as we.
Nine days.
Got it in there.
Yeah, we, we can advertise these all now because.
I just don't, I just.
We've got forty five days. It's got, got advertised within a forty five day window, I think.
Then, yeah, that's the maximum.
Yeah, the maximum, so, yeah. By, by next Thursday, those are, those are all gonna fall in.
Yeah, I mean, that's what, like, if we, if we had to change, I just wanna make sure we have.
And we'll probably, we'll publicize that, you know, several times just going down the pipe.
Indeed.
All right. Six o'clock or seven o'clock on the third?
Seven, I'll go for seven as much as we can.
Okay.
I don't know what the forty five day show we're talking about. I'm just, I don't know what time we're.
That, that's, we, we have to advertise any public meeting in our legal organ within a time range, time frame.
And the maximum amount is forty five.
We can't say we're gonna have a meeting next year not advertising no more than that.
Are you saying four, two, five, or four D five?
Forty five.
Forty five.
Okay.
Forty five, basically, yeah.
I hear you sound like you're saying four, two, five.
Forty five.
Yeah, just like the director said, we can't, we can't schedule a meeting for next year, six o'clock on a Tuesday in March and then, you know, hope that people show up and know what we're talking about. So, I guess no conflict on that.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
It just occurred to me, and I would suggest that the Civic Center given like a mid, a midpoint review at one of these meetings about potential amendments that you're considering, ones that, that you're considering positively, explaining why other things may not be considered as official amendments that we throw forward and those kinds of things. It, that kinda keeps the flow going back so that you don't get a thousand amendments right at the end, you know?
Right.
Month before you have to take some action. And it just gives everybody, I think, a little consideration that they know that what, whether it's good or bad, they know that their potential amendment or suggestion of review, comment, or whatever has been considered appropriate.
Reiterate what Lee mentioned earlier. I think maybe, for instance, on the first meeting on the thirteenth, we kinda focus on the subdivision section, the first two or three chapters, four chapters of the book. And then maybe the second meeting focus more on the commercial side of it. Then the third meeting would be kind of a, a follow up and, you know, you know, do some housekeeping on the whole thing again that we hadn't got cleared up at that point. That way, we can kinda stay focused right here and just work, work on this specific part of it. And, you know, that, we'll probably put that out in the, uh, in, in the notice in the papers, what we're gonna focus on that night. So, hopefully, we can stay on track.
But does that mean if a person, something happens and they couldn't make that first meeting, and they didn't, if they had something they wanted to talk about that section, does that mean they, we, we can't go back then?
No. What we would like to, as much as possible, but now, we wanna, as long as we can keep moving forward and be productive, that's what we wanna do. You know, if we just sit here and spin our wheels for three hours and don't really get accomplished, much accomplished, you know? I just wanna try to steer away from that. But, yeah, like I said earlier, we want everybody to have opportunity to speak. But if, if we can kinda prepare for that, you know, we're giving plenty of time ahead of time. Obviously, some folks have already got plans made they can't change at this point. But we, we will try to accommodate as many people as we possibly can to speak.
Are you looking to incorporate technology like Zen, another city's some, or just post a Zen link for one of their meetings?
That would be a BJ question.
Yes. Well, we'll, we will be doing that for that. I mean, depending on whether, I mean, we had it on the first one, and nobody really got the link. Hopefully, people will go to the county website and see that link and go to it. I will have it available, though, so whether anybody uses it, we'll see.
Hey, I just thought we could about trying to have at least one Saturday. Because I really think that a lot of people kind of, with the twelve hour shield, that everybody works on there. At least, if y'all could just try to work that in there somewhere.
I, I think that's something that, you know, everybody needs to look at calendars and plans ahead. Right, right, right. That's something we can, we can advertise it later. They have that fourth meeting on a Saturday morning.
Yeah, we'll discuss it on one of the other ones.
One of these other meetings, yeah.
Probably the third one.
It, it would be toward the end of the line anyway.
One of the thing, going back to the reviewing the sections, the last meeting we had, the first public meeting we had, there were a number of questions that were raised, like, it just wasn't clear on, uh, descendancy, heirs, property, dividing. People were confused about that and thought that might be under this ordinance. So, in thinking about sections to review, we collected a lot of good information in that first meeting that gave us some things that clearly are excluded, like agriculture, for the most part, is excluded. And so, I, I'd like to just, maybe because we did collect so many good ideas in that one, the first time we're coming together, we at least get those things that can be clarified and pushed out of this ordinance. There's, there's two sections, two sections in this ordinance that deal with scope, there's one on scope, and there's another section on exclusions. I think the exclusions are dealing with subdivisions, if I'm not mistaken. But, but we need to get clear on that because last month, we heard that. There was a lot of angst about farm property. Most of us have farm property. We need to get clear on, when does it become development and when is it not developed? And so, uh, if we can get those nailed down, I think that'd be a good thing, just to clear the deck so that we're focused on subdivisions and commercial. And I know commercial can take a lot of different, like your question.
Well, Mr. Winston, that kinda builds on what I was wanting to present to y'all tonight. Uh, that is a recommendation for better defining the term subdivision. And right now, the term subdivision is any division of a tract of land. I mean, that, that's not just commercial development or residential development. That's anytime you provide a piece of property.
Yeah.
So, what I did there, there is, um, a definition of better defined subdivision that more closely resembles what the commissioner and everybody are talking about. But I request that you take a look at that. That's how the Georgia Department helped.
That's helpful.
And, uh, that, that would probably eliminate seventy percent of people's concerns with this ordinance. Um, there's a lot more work that needs to be done other than that, but if that could be done quicker, then that, that would help a lot. That would, that would get things moving in a better way.
I guess this is meant for each of us to have one.
Yeah, just bring off the top page for everybody, and then, uh, I included a copy of the, or a partial copy of the regulations that the Georgia Department has on that one.
I have a quick question about that. And when you talk about multi-family houses adding rural areas in the county, some kind of multi-family house, wouldn't that require a sewer system? When you get up, I mean, seriously, I'm, I'm asking because I need some clarity. I don't, I don't wanna be afraid of something that I don't have to be afraid of at the front shop by being saying that they're gonna bring multihouses in here, when I know we don't have adequate sewer systems to extend anywhere near the rural sections of this county. So, that's what I'm concerned about. Are we talking about upgrading sewer systems or adding additional? Has that ever been?
You need to talk to municipalities that own sewer systems about that. Stevie County doesn't have any sewer system.
Exactly. So, that's why I thought that we never had the issue of having, say, this multiplex or even a multifamily unit being built out in residential lands. That's why I didn't know, I still don't understand if I'm concerned about that or if I shouldn't be.
There are some areas that unincorporated, uh, parts of the county that do have sewer. Pretty much between Summerfield and Tryon, they have sewer to search for prison all the way up to Walmart.
Okay.
So.
But your, your point on sewer and septic is extremely important.
Right.
It would have actually stopped if we could have done something with that development that came in from Atlanta. That was the biggest concern. How are, how are you gonna service these hundred units?
Well, we'd not have stayed long.
That's right. It wasn't.
To us, that would never even have been a question if that would get off the ground.
Well, there's a lot of money changing hands in that process.
Ten, twenty million dollars to build a facility to support the way.
Right.
You would, yeah, that's.
No way they could have done it if they wanted to.
But my understanding is this ordinance wouldn't have done anything to prevent that because they never applied to define the property. That, that piece of property that they got all the way off Garden Road is all in one chunk right now. It's still in the previous ownership, man. They, they never applied to split.
But they were, they were promoting it with separate lots.
And selling it.
And, and no titles, no deeds, a lot of weird stuff.
We used to care that last way, when I say.
But it, it would have allowed, it would have allowed at least a gateway to, here is, here's an ordinance. Is it subject to the ordinance or is it not? It puts the questions out there, and that entitles BJ to go talk to them and see, what are we doing here? Does this work or does it not work?
Does it or does it not?
Does it or does it not?
Does it stop the lights in Silvermane or does it not?
They never, they never applied.
Yeah.
So, I'm still, does this ordinance stop that from happening?
It.
Yes, it, it may not have stopped it, but it would have regulated it to where they would have had to comply with this to subdivision and develop that subdivision.
Or they would have been penalties.
Right.
Well, then, they, they would, they would have stopped.
When you're gonna stop?
Huh?
Regulations, not when you're gonna stop, which is gonna be stupid.
But if they, but if they did not comply with the ordinance, then the mechanism would be to take them to court and get a court order right for them to stop, stop development. And then, then the judge can put them in jail if they don't comply with that court order. That's, that's the mechanism in that direction. In that, in that specific case.
There's nothing that can actually stop that whatsoever.
Yeah, they need everything in this ordinance. They got a right to.
And that's the purpose of this ordinance is.
So, it really don't even serve the purpose of its intended for. That's what we're getting at.
With the ordinance, the county would have the right to go to these two parties that were contracting, I don't know how many contracts got done, to sell these lots and ask questions. Without the ordinance, there was, they had no authority. No authority to go get in front of the buyer and the seller and say, what's going on here? At least, that's the way I understood it from Jason and then Blake. I mean, I went through two commissioners with this angst over what in the world is going on over here.
Well, Jason, if I remember right, did do a Facebook post back during the election. He listed a laundry list of regulations and, and ordinances that were.
Here's, here's what would have, here's what would have, to, to Rick's point, the water and sewer would have ultimately stopped it. But not before. A lot of trees had been cut, dirt had been graded, because there wasn't anything to stop it until they started putting units in.
Well, all trees weren't being cut. That's cut up.
Even besides that, like, at, the, even if we didn't have an ordinance, the EPA and EPD got statute rules. They would have been violating anyway when they started that.
That would mean it's gonna be issued, no utilities would have been turned back.
That's what Jason was saying. I'm all.
Somebody's got it for us, though.
Yeah, I'm gonna try and put words in.
Well, listen, let, let's get away from the what ifs, and let's, let's do something positive here. We're chasing rabbits that's, you know, that's gone, you know? Another hunter's done got them, so let's be positive.
So, our data said, or we said, our data said.
All we got news, vote on it. We haven't done that yet, but that's.
Well, we, we had, what we was gonna do for, right?
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna wait on, wait on the fourth date later, try to see if we can do a Saturday date.
All right, ask it.
Right.
And then ask the community, what do we need to do to be prepared to come to that meeting and make the progress?
Come with specific questions and suggestions. Like I said, if you've got them in writing, would be more helpful. Because if we're just sitting here having a discussion right here, we hadn't changed a thing in the ordinance tonight. We've been here six, we've been here nearly an hour to pick three dates because we're chasing a bunch of rabbits. Um, at these public meetings, I wanna give everybody an ample opportunity to speak, but I want us to stay focused and on track and, and discuss what we want to, and that's changing the ordinance.
So, are you gonna scope it down to different sections for different dates?
I, I think that's my goal, yes. I wanna deal specifically with the subdivision half on the first meeting, the commercial developments on the second meeting, third meeting, as a catch-all to get everything.
And then have a fourth, I wonder.
Possibly, possibly a fourth meeting as needed, as, as needed, yeah.
Okay.
It may wind up having to be a fifth meeting. Who knows? Time it's all set and done. We, you know, we, one thing we don't want to be said is the public has not had ample opportunity to know about it and have input on it.
Well, if we're getting those two slid, the, I promise I will be ready for it.
Yeah. Well, as soon as I can schedule them tomorrow. Yeah. As soon as I get with her and she can check the schedule and everything, I will have them posted on chautooka county dot org, like, as soon as she tells me what they are. If they, she can confirm all three of those, it's great. But if there's one that's moved, we'll try to keep it at the seven o'clock situation, away from Wednesday, Wednesdays and Sundays. And if it happened, she had, we had to do it on Saturday before, you know, on one of those meetings or something like that, it won't be the first one.
Actually, BJ, if possible, let's try to schedule one of them at Ag Center, just.
Just to do it.
Just to have, have one at Ag.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I, I.
Number one, there's a lot more parking.
I wasn't even aware I could do that. That's great.
Right. Not, not near as noisy, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, folks, I hope this is productive. I hope it helps folks. Now, let me, let me say this. We all are gonna have ideas and things that we want, but at the end of the day, everybody's not gonna get everything passed that they want. That's just not gonna happen. It's, it's just not the way life works, you know? But we're gonna listen to the public. We're gonna listen to the public. What we, we, what we wanna do is things that, have, have a document that helps everybody, not helps one person. Okay, so keep that in mind as you're thinking through this and you're talking about it. The ordinance is gonna be here. It's here, and it's gonna stay. Let's, just make it the best we possibly can for everybody, okay? That's, that's what I think our goal is.
So, don't vote before we leave?
Yes, absolutely. We have to. Before I, before I can, we, we can't vote outside the meeting on anything.
Okay.
Right, Ben?
Yeah.
There you go. All right, first off, first order of business, we've got a resolution here. Is everybody happy with it as it's worded at this table?
Yeah.
If so, I need a motion, uh, to approve this resolution to deliver to the commissioner's state. Got a motion from Gray Winston?
I'll second.
You taking that?
I'll second.
Got a second from Lee Handy. All right, any further discussion from the board on this resolution? If not, all in favor of passing this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. You passed unanimously. Okay, next, next order of business is to schedule our meetings. Right now, we have, uh, October thirteenth at six o'clock, October twenty fifth at seven o'clock, November third at seven o'clock. These are all in twenty twenty two. Uh, at the Civic Center, with possibly one, uh, at the Ag Building based on availability. I hear a motion to pass that.
I'll motion.
I'll second.
BJ, I don't think you can make a motion. I'm sorry.
I can.
I'll take it.
You're not on the board, yeah. We got a motion from Byron. Got a second?
I'll second.
Got a second from Gray Winston. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Those meetings are scheduled. They'll be public. Thank you all for your input. Some of you got my phone number. If you don't, get it from somebody else. I'll be glad to talk to you anytime that I can. Keep in mind, I work myself, and like I said, I'm leaving here going wrong.
Resilience.
Oh, absolutely. Well, you're gonna need.